We call this council meeting to order. If you will, please stand with me in order to pledge allegiance and make standing for the question.
Libelous to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands white mission of God and individual with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor two.
Okay.
There you go.
And then.
I'd like to welcome again Dr. Charles Newman Sr., the pastor of St. Louis County Church.
Let us pray. Upon in heaven before your presence, we call in the name of your son Jesus Christ. We come first of all, God, to say thank you for this day and the blessing that we have experienced today. We thank you now for this city council who are gathered here tonight to transact the business of the city and pray your blessing upon them. Honor them, God, but bless their families and the big land collectively. Bless now you bless this community for which they serve. Bless their going out and bless their coming in. Now, God, bless you to such a hearts and the big land collectively together for our sins that we are committed made by our fall where the deed can't been into the safe forgiveness. And now, God, we pray when we finish the business that you have assigned for us to do it in this world, we pray you will see us into the kingdom of our people so you may bow down in the name of Jesus. Amen.
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 Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Okay, all members of council are purely present. We move on to item number one on the agenda will be the approval of minutes of February first, two thousand sixteen council meeting. Is there a motion? So, have a motion, is there a second? Is there a motion in a second? Any discussion? All in favor, should be five by raising your right hand or left hand. Any objections? You announce. Second item on the agenda, approval of accounts payable invoices totaling three hundred eighty-nine thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. Should we announce?
Before we deny our total invoices in demonstration, forty-four thousand six hundred thirty dollars and seventy-two cents. Court has no invoices, seventy-three sixty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. Fire department, three thousand two sixty-eight R six. Police, two thousand two eighteen fifty-five. Recreation, four hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-nine cents. Better hometown, one hundred nine ninety. Street department, sixty-seven thousand four seventy thirty. Garage, four thousand one sixteen eighteen. Electric, forty-four thousand four oh eight sixteen. Rider department, a hundred and twelve thousand eight seventy-one twenty-eight. Sewer department, eleven thousand eighty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents. For a total of general funds, two hundred ninety thousand six hundred eighty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. Squash and other funds, ninety-eight thousand eight oh nine. For grand total of three hundred eighty-nine thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety-five cents.
Is there a motion to approve paying fees?
Totally.
Have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, can you? Not with a full breakdown, but the street department, sixty-seven, uh, what's the ball?
Um, airbag payment to, um, Georgia.
Oh, okay.
Want to hear the mic?
Absolutely.
James, what does the class do on the same?
Madison Health is working on it.
We're out of it.
Uh, I don't know that we're out of it, but they are doing the repairs and they have found that the problem lied within the detention fund that that was stopped up and so they have gotten permission from that property owner to go there and clean that up so that the settlement.
We're not afraid that things back here washed out where we can't see them. That'll allow a bit.
I don't know what I'll work there, but I do not know. I'm assuming that they will work to make sure.
Any further discussion, appeals? All in favor? All right. Next item on the agenda is public hearing for alcohol license for beer and wine pouring at twelve West Main Street on as Alicia Reckon from Shawn Metzer for Epicurean Lighthouse LLC with business ads, blue tick, merchant tail company.
This may have been advertised in the reporter issues in February of three and ten of this year. Is anyone here representing the license applicants? Come on up, please. You can sit in public hearing here from the applicants. Counselor's act.
Evening, I'm Shawn Metzer. How you doing? Good.
All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Y'all have anything you'd like to say or council has any questions?
There is one item that I need to make you aware of. For years, anyone having fingerprints for an alcohol license went to the sheriff's department and they use the ORI number for the police department. Apparently, um, GCI has changed their procedures and now anyone that is requesting fingerprints on someone has to have their own ORI number. So the police department will have a number, the fire department will have a number, the public will have a number, and everybody's gonna have their own number. Unfortunately, when Shawn came back to give his application, I sent him out to the sheriff's department. That's when we found out that we did not have an ORI number, they were trying to get fingerprints. Um, we should have received, we did get the email today.
Well, we got one Friday.
Okay, so we have our ORI number. So, um, if it is your will to approve this, you will approve it pending a favorable fingerprint report. And then if we've got that ORI number, then they can go in, they can get their fingerprints tomorrow, and then I can let you know about the fingerprint report. But we have done that before, and this is not a their fault whatsoever. Uh, it's taken several weeks for the state to assign us an ORI. Is everyone aware of the location? This is in the old Merchant Mall building over on Main Street. Done an awful lot of work, some work to the outside, I haven't been inside, but a lot of work to the outside.
What's going on?
We need to just lay it out.
We're hoping in the next time, hopefully no later than April.
There's a construction.
Yeah. Yes.
All right, any other questions from the council? Any other member of the public or of the audience have anything they would like to bring as part of the public hearing? Is it just really beer and wine or is it gonna be? Please provide the drink, too.
Just beer and wine for the beginning, uh, and then we grow into a liquor license as, as we need.
There's nothing that could. All right. There are no other questions, we send the one that's interested in speaking all the same, we're closing the hearing. All right, what's the pleasure, counsel?
Second.
Have a motion to approve in a second, is any discussion?
When, how much longer do you? Mr. Wilson, how long?
No, just a, just a, how long does it take?
May, it can't end this evening, I don't want to.
But their fingerprints will have a report tomorrow. They go tomorrow to have their fingerprints, um, I will have a faxed copy of their fingerprint report within four, five hours, I think.
It should.
It should, yes, I should.
Provided that no other numbers will be required.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. No other discussion? All in favor? You announce. Congratulations.
Thank you. And good luck.
Appreciate you choosing for sake of the business. Next item on the agenda is to appoint Michael Bliss to the tree board.
You should have a copy in your packet of the, um, email from Mr. Bliss. He has actually approached us and requested to be appointed to the tree board. Um, he is a certified arborist. He's been doing work for the city. He pulled up the, um, shrubs here on the side of the hall, the rose plants, and he actually, uh, last Friday, he replanted the tree of, um, Mr. Morris and spoke about the last council meeting.
And I, I, I wanna thank you for that, too, you know. That's over at St. Louis. I'll let somebody check it up in the circle. It's not, the number didn't you see? Okay, all right.
He's definitely been an asset to the community already. Been volunteering his found.
Yes.
Grounds manager of Little Georgia State. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Mr. Michael Bliss, Mr. Michael Bliss to serve on the tree board. Now, what is the, what is the time range? Four-year, six-year, lifetime?
No time limit, no number of members for the board, just.
So my motion says that.
Right, and it's good to have one, too. Uh, Mike, have you seen a participating one?
Yes.
Mike, vote.
Oh, vote.
Yes.
All right, have a motion in a second, any other discussion? All in favor? Next item on the agenda is the approval of tree closings for live fire training, February twentieth, two thousand sixteen.
I have a plan to map in front of you of your, uh, road, uh, planned road closing for approaches burning this house. This house will be used as a training exercise. We'll close the house, uh, roads from eight o'clock to twelve o'clock, um, from, on Indian Springs, as you can see the red marks. There will probably be a little bit further down, just to make sure people don't turn up, but we're gonna leave it open where the folks in that area can get in and out. Uh, Mr. Gullifee is the one that's affected the most because the hose comes right from the hybrid, right down the side of the driveway, so, um, and we've already discussed that. We're gonna close, uh, north, uh, North Church Street from Adams to King. Morris Street from Indian Springs, uh, to Felton Street.
Where you run the hose from?
The, the hose will actually cross Indian Springs Drive. It's on the corner of West Morris, but it's across the street. It's on the other side, uh, and it may be even on the street with the block. I'm not sure. But we're on this route, uh, problem.
That's the closest one there?
That's the closest one to the water.
The chief, uh, you may wanna explain, you know, there's a lot of houses. And is there a need to be grown out? How did they go about doing it, you know?
Well, all we have to do is give you PA approval. And, um, and that's, and they have to have asbestos free. And we've got several on the list that we've, that we, that we're working through. And there's a big packet of paperwork that has to be filled out.
Okay.
Like, so there's been several, uh, I know, um, I might be wrong, but Mr. Willis, I believe, has one. And his is on, in the, in the queue to get approval and, and there's some others that we're working on.
Okay.
And they had had a little bit of a problem with the EPE. I said EPA earlier, EPE. The, uh, the asbestos approval, um, and that, some of those have to be redone.
Yes.
And so it kinda put us behind. But, um, we, as long as we can use it for training, then we are able to, to take care of the current house. But we can't do it without their approval. We have to have their, their blessing.
We'll clean the debris, uh, after it's all burned down, but who cleans up the?
The, the, the fresh patch church.
I, I belong to that church and, and, uh, we, we've been wanting the fire department to, to, to use that as a practice, uh, permanently. And just to, we're no longer using it as faith, but it's been cleaned out.
More parking space, but it's specific, that's why?
Right, yeah. That's my question, thank you.
Chief, isn't it the responsibility of property owner to get EPE approval and asbestos certifications?
Well, we, they have to get the asbestos certification, then we fill out paperwork to get it. And then they do a quick plane, not a quick plane, um, I think old English. Yes, and then we give it back to them once we're, I think.
Once you burn it down, you're right there.
But, uh, I, uh, I know that. And, uh, just to clarify, there is, there is another hybrid that we'll be using down on Morris Street, but the primary one's gonna be, have to be down on Indian Springs.
What size line would you have crossing?
Five lines.
Three, four.
One, two.
All right, what's the pleasure with the council?
I'm moving, what do you have? Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion?
Why do I need to explain from this, this?
I'm not sure it's necessarily necessary, but I think I'm, that I'm willing to.
I understand.
I have a quick question. Uh, have all property owners and businesses been notified?
The businesses that are in that area, there was not any that were directly involved. The property owners have been made away. The ones that are, you know, affected right, right here.
All right. Here is no further discussion, all in favor? Five votes in favor, one in not in favor. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the engagement letter with Duncan Hopkins for two thousand fifteen audit.
This is, um, just a formality, we're pointing at Duncan Hopkins as our auditors of the first meeting in two thousand sixteen. Uh, they always like to send the engagement letter, and, um, as I stated in previous meeting, we may have to ask for an extension, um, because Mr. Hopkins' son, it normally works on our, um, audit, is out in, who makes the phone?
Come around about.
He's, he's in school, so, uh, he's, he's no longer working with him, and, uh, so it, we're hoping that we have all of the paperwork and everything, all the reports signed by the end of June. If not, we'll know that last week of June is whether or not we have to ask for an extension. Uh, Mr. Hopkins is fairly confident that even if he has to ask for an extension, we can still have everything done for our capital, which is a comprehensive report that we've been doing since two thousand twenty, I'll be, um, we proceed award each year on that, that audit. Um, this again, this year is certainly for the same cost that he's done for the last several years, it's not to exceed thirty thousand dollars, and, um, they will, um, they've already done the inventory and have requested some reports to begin the work, but their, their main work will be the main portion.
Did his door come into the practice, type of brother, like?
She did, she came in, um, about this time last year, and she works on, on our audit, and she will be the primary on our audit this year.
All right, y'all have the letter before you, what's the point of your question?
Two. Second.
Second, discussion. Questions? All in favor? You announce. Next item on the agenda is a travel request authorization for ECG Economic Development Summit.
We have a travel authorization from Mayor Wilson for the, uh, ECG Economic Summit that will be held in Jekyll Island, April thirteenth to April fifteenth. Total estimated cost is eight hundred dollars. Are you attending the summit? And, um, Mr. Gullifee will be attending as well, so we're looking to approve both of those travel operations.
And I'm working on getting some hotel prices that are cheaper, the hotels, a conference hotel is too high in my opinion, so you're looking, you found something about eighty-nine dollars a night, but it looked, looked like they were close by and it's. You got one? Make a check.
Ooh.
Unless you got, excuse me.
So, Lou.
Have a motion, is there a second? Motion in a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I'm glad to see Mr. Gullifee wants it. That's it.
All right. All in favor? You announce. Next item on the agenda is the approval of deeds for sale of Beverly Street to adjoining property owners. Mr. Turner?
Um, Mayor, should we call the council approved, uh, the closure of, uh, what was formerly known as Beverly Street? Short Street over where the, uh, Grand Hospitality Building, uh, Hotel. I think that's a hint for the. The, uh, procedure, of course, is that property owners on each side of the closed public road have the opportunity to purchase if they desire. Joining landlords on each side opted to, uh, exercise that right. So we had a plan made, uh, by Steve Cullen, city surveyor, and, uh, he just provided the street down the, down the middle. I prepared deeds and waited to, uh, uh, get those signed, uh, on behalf of the city to convey this, and, uh, that'd be the next to last process and abandoned in closing the street. Final process would be to know if I D or T has been closed. So that's, I'm, I'm just asking you here tonight, council members, to approve the, uh, the deeds conveyed that area to Grand Hospitality Posey, uh, which is, uh, the adjoining on, on the, I think the north side, and, uh, Dennis K. Pritchett, who is the adjoining on, on the other side.
Are there any city utilities that we have laying down in this for?
I don't think there's any city utilities there. There is a, uh, uh.
George, I understand.
George transmission, it's not good power. Transmission line goes through there, uh, but that's not a city utility, uh. And I'm, I'm with the plan, I don't think there's anything else, nothing that affected the city.
Do we have a line?
We have the, uh.
Sales price?
Sixteen hundred and seventy-five dollars for each side. Includes, uh, paying, paying for the, the plan, too, so. The, uh.
Because there is a sewer line that runs, um, across Grand Hospitality's property. That's why he was standing there, sitting, all in part of Beverly Street, so that they could get their detention home around the sewer line. But I'm not sure that, that it goes under Beverly Street or not.
It is not, it is not showing on the plan. There are a couple of, uh, what look like just regular city electric lines, but, uh, they are, for the most part, have been the right of way for the, uh, power line, and so, but there's nothing showing underground on the plan.
We serve power to the, to the apartments that were existing. So that, those would all go on there.
That sewer easement, I mean, it's right there at the corner, does it go under the street?
I think it goes up along, along the side. Does it? And that, we have a, uh.
Four, no, I love it.
Which street, uh, Friday Road, Johnson?
Friday, Friday.
It looks like it goes from Johnson Lane over toward Beverly, it's about forty-five. Huh? Where do you want to go? I can't, it's, it's very small. Right here.
It's very.
Pretty small, I, I do that. It's odd that it was just stopped, I was like, maybe it's, maybe it's going.
Right, I don't understand, yeah.
Well, some of their names to the, uh, joint participation.
That is not showing in Steve's plan. Steve Cullen's plan.
What does this copy here?
This is the plan of, of the property, the Grand Hospitality Law, Grand Apartments.
Any clarification? Yeah, I don't know. Twenty centimeter line, do you have?
It may be twenty, it may be twenty foot.
Yeah.
Twenty foot easy, it may say twenty, but it's already within the so.
There's a twenty inch lane that comes through there. Up, uh, Hill, Benson Hill, Friday Road, over there. But I, I, I always, I thought it was a, by the side of Friday Road.
Would we service a home down there on Jack, uh, Johnson Lane?
Yeah, sure, we do.
And sewer line goes across the corner of that property because it was in conflict with where they wanted to, the detention facility, because they wanted to kind of drive and have a, um, dual car on it, which was then with, with the purchase of Beverly Street that we were going to, to relax the joints and, uh, actually, no, it was, uh, it was on point. I'm not sure if it goes under any, but there, it was under family, it didn't stop.
Well, it might stop because it, it then served, uh, the city, which is probably served by city, uh, check. It may stay and may stop. I don't know why it would. And then that, that side vision that was going in across the road. Sewer line was, yeah, sewer line for the road. Nothing's stopping that coming back this way toward Dennis. That may be where that east, that may be where that east is.
It's not showing on the plan, the line in the road.
You regard this, you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna.
Mayor has asked you. If, if, if it goes out of the road, the season, you have to leave a date or something.
But it'd be nice to document, I mean, we need to protect, I think we need to get it documented so that we don't do it with this. You know, let's make it known, make utility lines, you can find, tells where it runs and something like that. I think you have a clear note. All right, is there a motion forthcoming?
I'm moving, we go forward with the second, scanning the, all these, the classes.
Second. Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor? You announce. All right, next we have our work session. And maybe it's a good time to point out how, how we restructured our meetings, uh, at the first of the year. What we decided early on, I think it was after retreat, was that the first meeting of the month would be our regular council meeting, the second meeting of the month, we would take care of those council items that we had to absolutely take care of that have come up maybe within two weeks in a meeting or something like that. And then the balance of that meeting would be a work session. And the reason we did it that way is we, we wanted to consolidate our meetings, so we didn't have a work session on another day where a lot of people didn't know what was going on in the work session, and then we'd come and talk about it in the council session, and people were confused, so we incorporated the two. But one of the things that I noticed that we eliminated when we did the work session was public participation. I know we've got a couple of people here that they want to speak tonight, so I think in fairness to them, if y'all will allow that, we'll let them speak tonight, but it's my understanding in the future on work session nights, we don't have public participation. But on the other nights, we, on the first meeting of the month, there will be public participation. Was that the, ten of the council, or was it intended something different? Okay, are y'all good with, let's open it up briefly for public participation now? Since we had not, I don't think we really made that clear at the outset, how that works. So, before we jump into the work session, I will offer the follow-up of public participation, if anybody has anything that they'd want to know.
My name is James, I'm, I do that eighty-five, I think, though. And what, what it is, I would like to know if y'all contain to this. y'all come, came to a pursuit on, uh, going out to the Red War Fish, another day, I would like to ask Mr. Milton, have you received a letter from my lawyer?
No, I haven't.
You haven't, expect to receive one.
No, sorry.
Can you play the counsel? Mike, sir?
Only thing the rule says is that we have been communicating about, as well, then I want you to know, man, man, you know, we have been communicating about this, right? It's something that I don't want you to think that we ever sent either on this, but we have been communicating about, um, that's not really the only thing I say on that, um, but I told you, I, I'm glad you're fine, I realize, um, and citizens like you that make this job worthwhile, that you, that you live in a five cars, five people, some people may think it's petty, but you want, and you keep pushing, so, that's all I have.